Eh, Dumelang? Dumelang?
Good morning, everybody!
Legay?
How are you today, Ninsani?
Reti? Aragannara Simulla? Aragannara Kala? Oh, ni vekala, ni raid ngokala. Leenyenyenyani, vun, kani veyo kala ni raid? So, Aragannara Simulla? Can we start to begin?
Inga basi, ngai kala, i, ndibane yu tue namshanjue?
Aye, ndichongonja. Can we start to begin? Or should we begin to start?
Singa kala uku kalisa.
Okay. Makalize nukalisa, uku kalisa. Eh... Let's set first the ground rules.
Man, mi kenjek, eh, imikato, esauti silandele, ulen ndibane yanaamshanjue.
Ni andaza nditi?
You know me?
Nonke! Tu, 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 tu! Kabano tuki lumdumse ngansi?
You are surprised that you have got this handsome person in front of you?
Okay. Eh... And it is a song for the better part of the day. So, ni sondas?
Disa ubanani ke, abtu istrinka, dasemini, ndinetema lobake saobesasana, esimini yama.
Pasubesasana?
When we finish here, at least you should know each other better.
Eh... I want to check, which language do you want us to speak?
Funu gusba, si sebenzo, ulu rim.
Let's...
Okay, let's do this. How many people speak closer, hands up?
Bangapi, abanabateta is closer up.
Okay. How many speak Zulu?
Banga, abanabateta is Zulu.
Shem, ngangu mamba yetu. Okay, how many speak Africans?
Banga, beabateta ulu rimles Africans.
Another mamba yetu. Eh... Is... Sitzonga? Only one, another mamba yetu. Chivenda?
Chivenda?
Only one, another mamba, Ubi, Ubi, Ubi. Eh... Stwana?
Oteta is twane.
Stwana? Nothing! And then you're going to have problems. Then all of you are going to have problems because... Kimtwanan.
Ni sakbanenma ke, kubamnandi wumtwan.
Eh... And I'm not going to speak a language that I don't know.
And isukunu teta ulu rimeni ngalwasi yo.
Ni sausin dage because it translates as "kawo".
The interpreters are there to take you through, so you are lucky today.
Yeah. Otherwise, ingatinabu banenma ke, stwan. Eh, klanbonu ba ingatba enso koli zantwa, tetis stwananabo, bakage kenjengaani. Ni raid anditi? Okay. I think we must start, but let's start by apologizing. I got a briefing that some of you have been here as early as our first eight.
Tiplanjwe, ukwenza isnengneso, sokbasitale ngeltesha, ndivile, kuba abanyebi, nubebefike, gekala lenzimbe esposo.
Eh... Please accept our apologies.
Tia, niplanjwe, ndibongo sa, ni, namkele isnengneso situ.
Eh, I'm told there are other people who are still making their way here.
Tia temba, bakoneke abanya bandu, abasa, ukusosbanaganya minati.
Tia temba, nukuti ni invite, we go meeting here right?
I hope that you have been invited to a correct or a right meeting.
But in?
How did they invite you?
Butegnumchat?
Did they say we're attending a wedding day, a wedding ceremony?
Butendia chat? Climate change? Ahiko, yonge londo dia chat ab? Any nte kutin, dia teti stores?
You must understand, I also speak is closer.
Now, and ifunu teti is closer because ndasken, tete si, si dipninga diva, yabon?
I would like to speak deep closer because you might end up not understanding what I'm saying.
Okay. Let's get into business.
Masuka, disegam, sibenzwe.
I'm going to request that we have one meeting.
Okelake, sibenenge nganiso, eh, nyekupera.
Ukolo puto, wamba, wamba, pa ngikamera, niseginjeka, nina nana, niasegin, olu asobu, niseganaam, galo.
There is this gentleman with a camera, please, you must not, eh, you please ignore him, you must communicate or you focus on what I'm saying or what I'm doing in front.
Ungo walapanai, unemi kuwa.
He is coming from your area.
Yeah.
He is such a person.
Unemi kuwa.
He has got some tendencies.
Yeah. Ngata, uito liglenje, di teta. Okay, manditela otata, sipaka mesonge ni... Bakule imingo, imingoas.
I would like to invite you to all, can we all stand up and put off our heads?
Eh, let's sing the national anthem.
Si, ulen mobile wesiswe.
(Singing) Usisileleli Africa, na lupa hisu ponolayo, izwa imitana soye ju, posi. Silelela china, isahoba yo. Iteka buluka, sijama sae su, ite kisari, kala kese, usi buluke, usi buluke, sijama sae su. Sijama sae su, satafika, satafika. Edi tofa, oseki, andi kila, fa nonsi. Uzirbe, feve, bantlas, bani klasa, akorbi. Santa Pauls will come together, and united we shall stand, eto siri, hasa, owe. It's a long, long journey.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Tia, bulela kakuno?
My name is Ntibimotise.
Ikamalam, umshoni pegi, umshoni motise?
Eh... Lendeno, umshoni pegi, ndichongonji ndivilemosi. Di timena, my name is Ntibimotise.
Tia ikamalam, ndikwini ni motise?
Ya, bedi, azange nditi, umshoni pegi, you are, ayayaya. Eh... I am a member of parliament.
Ilungu le parliament?
I am the chairperson of the portfolio committee of fisheries, forestry and marine.
Ngu sishanlo, wekomi ti, echonge ne, nesa mshati, eh, esoguloba, unienezinda.
I'm relatively young.
Eh, ndibonakala, noko, sesen, ngokuswe eliswe.
Chief, isakneta, lentu, bo tete, lentu, teta. Yeah. Ben di chilubandisa, tete samis closer, si dip. So I don't want you to be found wanting. So, utete siva, maybe, yabon? So, because nami, even desanjan, nami desanjan. And it? Yeah. Atindi zeliswe, ni wat? Iswe ngobu so eliswe. That's fine. Now... Oh, di zengobu so eliswe. Eh... And I'm handsome.
Ndiamshre?
Ninga ke, gulondo? Konga, kimsab?
We have a problem in that.
Sevumalana mos. And ifani no...
I am not like another person that I would like to point.
Ninga chambiz. Okay. I want to introduce the members of parliament that I am with here today.
Tifuna ukwasisa ke, amalungwe ndiyamanau, asuka paye paramente?
Eh... Koni mazi yo ab?
Is there any member that you know or you are familiar with?
Lo ya? Lo? 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 Lo ya? Oh, ninaniase le member i parliament?
You only know this member of parliament?
The only member of parliament that you know is this one?
Ilu genlele, paramente, leli kupera.
That's fine. I want to introduce from my left, Honorable Dlamini.
Tifuna ukwasisa apanga seknelewa, umshoni pegi, ujamine?
Honorable Dlamini is a member of this committee, he's also a member of parliament.
Umshoni pegi ujamine, lilunglele committee, ekua lilo ni lunglele parliament?
Eh, he hails from Khouting.
Usuka ke, kui province, kui pondo i Khouting?
Next to him, it's Honorable Mthunu.
Payen nga kuye, kuksheli, umshoni pegi, umthunu?
Honorable Mthunu is a member of parliament and a member of this committee.
Umshoni pegi umthunu lilungle, paramente, kua lilo ni lungu le committee?
She hails from Kwazulu Natal.
Usuka kui pondo i Kwazulu Natal?
Now both, Honorable Mthunu and Honorable Dlamini speak Zulu.
Bobabinni, umshoni pegi ujamine, umshoni pegi umthunu, ba teta ulu rimeni olusisi Zulu.
Now next to me, it's Honorable Kancho.
Apa italen, bamgukho, umshoni pegi ukancho?
She is also a member of parliament and a member of this committee.
Na ye, ke uka lilo ni lungle, paramente, ekua lilo ni lungu le committee?
Honorable Kancho hails from the Eastern Cape.
Umshoni pegi ukancho, ke usuka apa imbu makoloni?
Oh, nimvetlasi timoluwen? Ngatini na, yume kuwa, nje nani? And then on my far right is Honorable Kapa.
Payen nga sekunene, kwa mitrebele, umshoni pegi uka pa?
Honorable Kapa? Hon... Eh... Honorable Kapa is also a member of this committee and a member of parliament?
Umshoni pegi uka pa, lilungu le le committee, ekua lilo ni lungu le parliament?
I'm sure you know where he comes from.
Tia temba, niyamasiba usuka pina?
Uvelap? Upa Eastern Cape? Oh, nimvengo, bot? Go potan, potan? Yeah, Honorable Kapa comes from the Eastern Cape.
Umshoni pegi uka pa, ke usuka apa kiponi, imbu makoloni?
Next to Honorable Kapa is Honorable Mbata.
Ngaku umshoni pegi uka pa, kuksheli umshoni pegi umbata?
Dumelang? Okay. Honorable Mbata is also a member of this committee and a member of parliament?
Umshoni pegi umbata, lilunglele committee, ekua lilo ni lunglele parliament?
Where do you think she comes from? Eh?
Ni kena wa usuka pina?
Free State? Okay. Alright. Honorable Mbata comes from Khouting.
Umshoni pegi umbata, usuka kipondo i Khouting?
Eh... Jengaani, lendu, Dumelang, namdia kalui. Ben diga yasba, yaiteta, na, lendu.
I didn't know that he can also greet you in that manner, that is Dumelang.
Nonsaga, zakafuni introduction.
The only member next to me needs no introduction.
Ni raid ngalot.
You are happy with that?
And you, and you asis, umdun diga masnam?
I won't introduce a person that I don't even know.
And then you have me. The most handsome one.
Oh yenake, ukangelega ya umshre?
Yabona, ndina yo, intoman, eh, kuba i problem, nyan klan city amensam, kubene ngolo nyan, ndinga ibaba, i ab? And, and you must be clear, if you are disputing that amensam, say it. Kungo nuntelenka, ngalento? Bandi mshre? Or ubushre ben do, da zinkoma saya? Ndo saktaleso? Okay. I want to render the apologies of other members of parliament.
Tifuna ke, ukushuliswa isnengneso, asuka kumanyi amalungwe i parliament?
We have received apology of Honorable Bryant.
Si fumenisnengneso, asuka umshoni pegi uBryant?
Honorable Weber.
Si fumeni na, umshoni pegi Weber?
Honorable Winkler.
Nomshoni pegi Winkler?
All of them are members of this committee.
Bongeke, ban amalungu ale committee?
Eh... I don't want to say today where they come from.
And ifunige, ubakela, ubabasuka pina, namshanjue?
Because it means I must also say where we come from.
Londo ya utepa, namfunene, nditas, umdun, nomtuba ingaba usuka pina?
Goguzo, ubangati siti sortwa.
It seems as if it's only us whom I have managed to explain where one comes from?
But because, andina, si sasfu, bas, si sasmosandu. Eh... Honorable Weber, Honorable Winkler, Honorable Bryant are members of this committee representing the DA.
Ongeki la amalungu, umshoni pegi Weber, Honorable umshoni pegi Winkler, Honorable Bryant, bangamalungu ale committee, kwa dabasuka umutoi DA.
Then we have an apology of Honorable Singh of the AFP.
Si na ye, ne snengesuka, umshoni pegi Singh, asuka umutoi AFP?
Then you have Honorable Paulson of the EFF.
Sibena ye, umshoni pegi Paulson, asuka umutoi EFF?
Then you have, eh, Honorable Holomisa of the UTM.
Sibena ye, umshoni pegi Holomisa, asuka umutoi UTM?
Then you have us, from over here.
Ibe siti ke, si nisazi, ke ubasuka pina?
Tia bonakala mos?
You can say for yourself.
Gogubendina funu, icholonduba, uba anuvela, uba anuvela, pi, uba, apa siti sortwa? Because tinasi, nchata serias, andichongoba, abanya, wanchata serias. But since si cho, ndivile mos? Ungai toligu za emoshi. Right. Honorable Winkler, no, Honorable Winkler was with us, but she had to leave now because she's not feeling well, she's flying back to Kazerem.
Umshoni pegi wuklebe, uniennati, ndona ngelishwa ke, kuyoga kona ukulo, kubulisileyo, kuye funeka bambe, ndizamchin, abuele, ekendla ke, ekaze.
But with us, but with us, there is a number of parliamentary staff.
Apa paka, tuge, aku anamalungu, eh, angamako sa, asibiza paye paramente, askapileyo?
From the secretariat, parliamentary staff, media, interpreters, I'm going to request all of you to rise so that the people of the Eastern Cape, them, danzan, can see you.
Abakela ke, babaka, mibonge, abasuka, musekelo, ku, sasazolenda, aba, obakula tulibama ngaku, onopala, nshalo, yongezi, umshabile.
The protectors were there, all of them.
Bakuanakena, makosa, asukuleke, apakatu guetu?
Banemi kuwa, agena?
They have those tendencies.
Yeah. Disanitalela, klaskuwa, ubai, yantu, lemiku.
I will explain later what do those tendencies mean.
Namba, abanyebi, nabonile kui TV?
Maybe you have seen some of them on TV?
Abezenzindosha.
When they are at work?
Okay. Now, I want to invite the gentleman on my right.
Tifuna ke, ubi, ubi zelne, nehli la, pa italin, kwa masekunene?
He is the speaker of Paphalo City Municipality.
Ungu somlomo, ke, uemaspala, umba, tayi Paphalo City?
He is councillor Matengwana.
Ungu temba, umnomzana, omatregwana?
Tifuna ke, ataleba, i, zibochiwe, i zinjana.
Eh... I would like him to explain the team, how strong it is the team that we are really bringing on board.
Aye. Nditi, ndifuna, u councillor Matengwana, after... Di, di tifuna ukansela matregwana ataleluba izinja zibochiwe.
I would like Honorable Matregwana to indicate that really it is safe in this environment that we are in.
Aye. Tifuna ukansela matregwana ataleluba izinja zibochiwe.
I would like Honorable Matregwana to indicate that we must cool down, there are no risks that associated, everything is calm in this area.
Tifuna ukansela matregwana ataleluba izinja zibochiwe na. Okay, right, and officially, I wanted, I want him to officially welcome us.
Tifuna ukumbemao mnomsana metoga na ba asosamkele.
And tell us if the dogs are on the loose or not.
Asitalela uba ingaba akoba unguza sautipala nabona sikuselekle na klenda osiguli.
No, I like eh, the interpreter.
Yes, tendis du.
He's a very good interpreter, I must say.
Yes, normal.
Eh, molweni eh, ntlanga nswi.
Greetings to everyone.
Kwazel bana ye andazi eh, gamalamdi ngu Humphrey Makotwa Matregwana.
For him to also know me, my name is Humphrey Makotwa Matregwana.
Ma, kregwa.
Matregwana.
Oh, Honorable Member Kapa. Undazi timu bandum timbu.
Honorable Member Kapa knows me as Bandum Timbu.
So, now speaking like ba, ba kuteni, said the bandum timbu.
Then you'll find out for yourselves as to how I came to be bandum.
Fuchana ge ndunza yen zapa. Eh, nklala ngapambi le we committee.
So just briefly, um, this is what I'm going to do, um, through you, Chairperson.
But I want to take five minutes and talk about these people.
Let me just take five minutes and talk about these people.
Tete ngani balala.
Talk about you as a community.
As a PR counselor, I'm deployed in this ward, Ward forty-eight.
Na ken di beku njenwa tayaba apa kulewa tika forty-eight.
Um, but talking about them, tifuna ukala klanditi gabantu basen Dancane.
Let me start by saying these people are people from Dancane.
And this year we are celebrating sixth years. Ukba koko Dancane.
Stetanges nemige ngamashumi matanda tu ukba koko Dancane. Si vuisana nalumi nyaka.
But the victims is a forced removal.
Ba bekuwa kapaka ukunya nzelwa.
From Dangan Village. A number of areas from the old location.
Besuka koko Dangan Village, na kwezi.
This must be a very interesting history for you, those who are not coming from this area.
N'inga nomchaga klimba ali nina banu banke ngoba lapa.
The people who are here are coming from West Bank.
Banje basuke West Bank abala pa.
Abanya basuka from an area called New Brighton.
Banje basuke New Brighton, area called New Brighton.
Abanya basuka kui area ekto kwa Meckin.
Others from Meckin area.
Kwa Tsolo.
Tsolo.
Tsolo divided into small parts.
Tsolo ke washula shulewa zinda wanesi nani.
Makambeni.
Kambeni.
Moriva Komoro, not solo proper.
Not solo.
So these are the people of basuka kwezo areas. It may not be them. But abazali babo, but abanye balapa, kuku age basuka kon.
May not be them, but some of them maybe through their parents, been their parents that have been there.
Nenake basuke juanaspek, these are the areas where like Alexandra Township, manla.
Nenake basuke Khauti ni ge ifana pa no Alexander lenda.
Eh, apo ba besuka kon na kwa Tsolo.
Apo ba besuka kon, where they came from?
We can tell, tell a lot of stories about eh, the original area where we come from.
Sengateta use krasa lenda osusuka uyo.
Township started in nineteen sixty-three, Chame. This one.
Ilogisishala loza kala ngo nineteen sixty-three, Lena.
Yeah. I was two, I was over ten when I came here.
Ukuzagwa mapandanseni mblulile ngaminyaga li shuni.
And the company was, that's what it tells.
I'm not that young eh, that's what it tells.
Um, I met some of the people that I was with in national parliament.
Di tibenabande nanke ndanabo pa paralamente kaswe lo.
I was there from twenty fourteen to twenty nineteen.
Nandi pa kulemnyaga ka twenty fourteen ya ku twenty nineteen.
I was with Manla Dlamini.
Nda nomanta Dlamini ke pa.
From, no, not pa.
Oh pa.
From nineteen ninety-six to two, to two thousand and six.
Usuke lango nineteen ninety-six yu chongo two thousand and six.
When I was a provincial sector of the African National Congress.
Ngandan no balachi kelele we pondo.
Yes. So it's people that I know eh, abba u, u Kancho.
Banden basi oké abba.
I was working with Ukancho when I was a deployee in Setikama.
Dansebenza nokancho tanda ndai bekuwa yu sebenza lapaitsetikama.
Lo ke ndanina ye, eh, kozanda uzaspa tlayla uzo.
Over there.
Honorable Kapa.
I was with him in exile, u, ona obeki kilayo Kapa.
Eh, we'll tell stories eh, on another day.
Sanbalse lange nyimini.
Honorable Chair of the Portfolio Committee.
Sla lo bekeleyo wa le committee, miselwayo.
Honorable Members of the Portfolio Committee.
Namalunga bekeleayo le committee, portfolio.
Hopefully they are members of the eh, Paphalo City Municipality present.
Namalungu om, akoyo apa i Paphalo City.
Na nibalala basakaya, madinbulisa ngalenzasa.
And greetings to all of you as a community this morning.
It is my honour and privilege to welcome the Portfolio Committee of Forestry, Fisheries and Environment led by Chairperson, eh, you honourable.
Ya vuyiswa.
Hands up.
Ya vuyiswa kukundamke laapa, no nke jenga ba kui koi le committee, ye zo, ye zamashati, zo global nindalis mongileyo eh, ekoke longue weke, nzoana, engosla lo.
When I say handsome, kukestosa kutwa u nzoana, 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 that's handsome. No, not muntzwa. Isolo, besi hosted a committee iya kwa human settlement.
Yesterday we hosted the Human Settlement Committee.
Na yu isenza, lumsa benziniza wenzana, nklange apa.
Doing the same work that you're going to do today.
Ilande la izin do, ezwezweyo, nesenzwe, kakuhle, esinyezenzwe kakubi, uholmenti.
Following up, following up on what the government has done well, where they've done well, and also where they have not done well, we're also following up that.
We assembled here today exactly five days before, the South Africans celebrating their twenty-nine years of freedom. Since the first democratic elections in South Africa twenty-seven years ago.
Be sikhla ngene apa ndingacho nditinsuku ezintan uktengo, si ngabantu basen zanzafrika, si vuyela uba se yaxa kululeka, sengi twenty-seven ka ebi.
Yes. Sklange ne apa genamklange, si zo physiki sa, izipribo, somka kosseko wetu, nemika ko, yapaya kulanju yowisamte to e paralamenta Kapa.
We gathered here to get, today to, to fulfill um, the, the decisions that were made, and especially those that were made in the parliament, the head parliament in Cape Town.
As we understand, the purpose of the bill is to enable development and effective climate change response and a long-term just transition to allow carbon and climate resilient economy and society for South Africa, in the context of sustainable development.
Zebani kondeke, lomte to uyiloayo, injongo ya uku banaku, singa tui imingeni ejonke ne, nochi injoki meko ze mozulu.
Honorable Chair, on the nineteenth of May twenty twenty-two, Minister Baba Krisi said, I quote.
Ko mayi o nineteen twenty, ko mayi ka twenty twenty-two, om, patisoa, obabra krisi, okewafika ndifunuka mkapula.
Severe weather events, a phenomenon associated with global warming, are a reminder that climate change is already part of our lived reality.
Meko ye mozulu, ematongo, chinja ku meko ye mozulu, siyavuma uku, baseku inalene, yobombe tu esipilayo imishange mila.
The sixth assessment report of the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change says that by twenty thirty, twenty thirty, fifty percent, okay?
Ina riti pa ngo twenty thirty eh, efela kui committee, ede jonke ne, na yu le meko yokinja ku meko ematongo ye mozulu, iti.
Fifty percent of the world's population will live, will live in coastal areas eh, that are exposed to floods, storms, and tsunamis, intensifying the vulnerability of communities living in conditions of poverty.
Iti payana i fifty percent ndi yaban da bashala ku ndaweselu noyemeni, ezestringeni, yande kakuli meko ya bongo, ba ba besestringeni ngaku umbuba, bangaxaselo aziz kukula, na kukukuseka kumshaba.
Maspala kumbata wasi Paphalo City, which were severely, areas of eh, Paphalo City which were severely affected on recent disasters. Many people were left homeless and agricultural produce completely destroyed.
Bandaba nins ba sheke benga na makaya, nesindaba zlimilezo, nagaleka kulu, kuinteleke lebe zantu bakona apa kulumaspala ombata wasi Paphalo City.
Na kumbula ke balalali, yet January eighth ka twenty twenty-two.
You'll remember that in January eight twenty twenty-two?
Vesima ngata ngata, kumkukuliswe izindu zabantu, kumke izindu, ufsuleke abantu, abantu nabantuwa.
And you'll remember that we were busy up and down because some houses were demolished by the natural disaster, and some lost their lives, even some children lost their lives, and some lost their houses.
Ya yaske, nisene ndonga kuti, koba ezuzindo azkenziwa, holmenti ke eh, wepo ngaba Paphalo City, uyasbopelala ba ezuzindo zakwenziwa.
And I know, I know that you're still unhappy with us because some of those things were not solved, some of those problems were not solved, but we committed as the government of the Paphalo City to fulfill the promise.
Kalagameke sisabe silapem Dancane, jengu banisaz, sisenza i IDPs.
We'll start here in Dancane, as you know, starting with IDPs.
Iklesage uba, nisipaga misesuzindo, kodwa, representation ka mayor, Princess Faku, uzavzaza, i plans etu zo lungu sesezindo.
So that will be the time then to bring out these matters, but in that mayoral meeting eh, Princess, Mayor Princess Faku, then she will bring out the, how then this will be handled and how this will be done. You need to bring that up at that time.
Honorable Chair, I would like to conclude by wishing your Portfolio Committee well in its mission to produce a quality bill that will pass the constitutional test.
Man kokumbel eke sla lo bekeleyo, ngobandikonelele limbumelelo.
As lawmakers.
Kumbetu yiloayo, ukwazi ukfuma na insabelo ifaneleki layo.
As lawmakers, let us do everything possible to build resilient institutions that respect the rule of law and deliver services to all citizens.
Njenke ngokele skoyo masimiselu laulululutrelima, olusa ukwazi uknaye tabantu ba fuma ne inkonsesenzisleyo, nenkonse zabantu nato.
Again, I would eh, in concluding, I would allow me, Chair, to recall the words of President Nelson Mandela when he said.
Tan kokumbela kandifumeleke nkhumbula masika moga melu Mandela kawati.
The central objective of our reconstruction and development program is to improve the quality of life of all South Africans, and in particular the most poor and marginalized sections of our community.
Oye nando, owo kwa kango uchaibuto le tu labantu, kubana kuputulwe ubomi, ba bandua bangabashali, inga kumi, apa bakuinmeko ezmatongo, apa bakuinmeko zentopeko.
Ichilo ke lenwef, seyalanu lelareheli.
The old man has said it and now he's late.
Eh, kani tlala pansuke ndi nganga ya se, koso dolupu wetu, bekfanba ngu yomi klandau, kodwa ku vele i berevement, ulapo ke, jenga bana basen zaku nyeh, nabasen zanaayo. Melayena kunyene streba sak esonge, diabulele.
Before I sit down, let me just send an apology from our mayor, there was a berevement in the family, so now I'm representing her, thank you.
Nkosi kakulu eh, Councilor Matregwana.
Very much, Councilor Matregwana.
Eh, mazene to.
We really appreciate, we are thankful for your presentation.
Kandi chiluba kani notetisa mistosa ba guza ukso trage kabantu.
We be having tough times.
Uyavu mo Councilor Matregwana ndinzwaana.
Eh, Councilor Matregwana really said I am really handsome as I have already indicated.
Uyavu.
He fully agrees with me.
Yeka elele putimtimbu, nobanu ba nuba, unama kambani nzi, yeka le uutindiinzwaana.
Let's forget about other things that he said, let's keep one thing, he said I am handsome.
Bendimkalileke u, u Honorable speak ba magastaleluba izinja zibochiwe, ah tuwa kai bamba nga nuwibamba.
I have requested him to indicate whether we are in a safe environment. I would like to indicate that he didn't go to that area of telling us that we are safe in this environment.
Izija.
I mean, we are facing no threats or no danger in this area, he didn't say go to that area.
The dogs.
Threats are not around us.
Thank you, thank you very much, Councilor Matregwana. Eh, samkeleki.
We feel welcomed.
Gugu ndya namke lamna.
Let me welcome you now.
Kodwa andisu kwaliza kula is tribal lekleyo because I might misconstrue it.
I'm not going to the list or the manner in which it did in case I climb in the pasama islo payana paya.
I, I might misconstrue it.
Slawi, kwenye sekuti, tibenoku itinza payana paya, andisunge na klanu ebiteiti.
So we have a, we have, at least Honorable Dlamini and Honorable Mbata probably have a bit of this information because of age.
Tine tyeba lobake umshoni pegi ujamine umshoni pegi ombata ngafa, bana loluas ebelte da kuba, ngengewa yoba sele beba dalanogo, ba kumbula kla ebite, ba kumbula isme ebite dangas.
So, so this is your food, the Councilor Matregwana.
I'm going to take time and read what you were explaining today.
Because all I know is just breathy and drops of M'Nanzane, Honorable Kapa.
If I have time, I would invite those people who know what he was saying to put their hands up, but no, let's leave it for another day. We'll come back and engage the issue further.
We accept the apology of the Executive Mayor of the city. Councilor Faku is a former member of parliament. Now, Councilor Matregwana is also a former member of parliament.
Let us not go there. I have been addressing you for quite some time now. I can see that you appreciate when I am addressing you, looking at your smiles.
Let me invite Honorable Mbata. Their purpose is public hearings that we are conducting across the provinces. And the Eastern Cape in particular. And then from there, we will invite Mika Teco. So I realized, when I asked the speaker, who amongst us can speak Sitzonga? And she said she's alone. Now, me and her can speak Sitzonga. But I will invite Honorable Mbata first.
You will realize that it's the only phrase that she knows, this tumelang, otherwise there is nothing behind that greeting tumelang from her.
Honorable Mbata?
I do speak Isikosa, I also speak Isizulu. I also speak.
So, we are, we are, we are in the march. Let me greet everyone, starting with the Jefferson. Our speaker. And the honorable members here. And, na, nino, all of you that are here as the community members.
My audience or the community in attendance, let me also greet you.
Not forgetting our officials and our VIP. Mine is very short. Climate change is impacting South Africa. And it's causing droughts. Crop failures. Livestock. Livestock deaths and loss of life. From floods and heat waves. Vulnerability in areas such as. Payo diversity. Agriculture. Water. Secriments. Infrastructure. Energy. And health. And it's worsening poverty. Unemployment. And inequality. Briefly, I will say, in most cases. If you look at the heat waves, it doesn't affect only the workers but even us as community members. And as we have seen, the Department of Health has started to issue messages on how to prevent a heat stroke. And when it comes to the working environment. We usually have the safety reps. We call, there's the issue that we call it a body, body system. Body system. So in a working environment, we call it body system because the safety reps, they train the employees that while they are working, you must watch your coworker. We politicize it as an injury to one and is an injury to all. When it comes to infrastructure, most of our infrastructure gets damaged during flooding. Where you found that there's usually outbreak of water point diseases like bo cholera. Then, the crops, they, they, it's either they are affected by the sun, where the sun is too hot, or the water is too much, then they die. So in most cases, you'll see that the infrastructure, which are the buildings, the roads, facilities, they get damaged because of the floods. Hence, collaboration between different stakeholders. All tiers of government, tiers of government. Is necessary to reduce these vulnerabilities. To reduce the drivers of climate change. And improve communication and awareness. Our constitution as well as our international agreements. Such as Cato protocols and Paris agreements. Compels us to take steps. To reduce carbon emissions. And improves lives. Under climate change conditions. This meeting is part of the first process of the developing over acting legislation. To address the realities of climate change. Climate Change Bill is thus. It's the first draft. It's the first draft of legislation specific to climate change. It's Bill Number Nine of 2022. Here in South Africa and public. Public input is essential to formulate a law, a law that aligns with the aspirations of every citizen of this country. Therefore, feel free to express your views on any aspect. On any aspect of the bill, such as definitions, policy alignment. Institutional arrangements. And climate responses. In short, this, this bill, it was started in 2018 by the late Minister Edna Mulewa. May her soul rest in peace. She was a minister of this department for quite some time. I think she's the, she was the longest serving minister of this department, the environment, forest and fisheries. I was honored to work with her, though by that time I was a manager in the Department of Health and Public Works, but I had an honor to work with her. I won't go much because the department officials are here. They are the one that are going to take us further on the issue of climate change, as they are the aspects in climate change bill. I can see. Niabo.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Honorable Mbata. Now, I want to invite Mika Teco.
Problem, Mika Teco does not speak Thosa. Also didn't hear that. It sounds very nice.
Five minutes, you're not ready. My name is Mika Teco.
I told you, I'm smart. You know, all that history the speaker was talking about, but you had nothing when we're speaking.
Mika Teco is going to do exactly what Honorable Mbata did. But go a bit deeper in terms of the detail of the bill. I, from there, and this is a treaty game.
Oh, from there, I'm not speaking.
From there, and this is a treaty, not a treaty game.
I won't speak anymore after that.
And don't be shocked.
I spoke about some tricks here. The gentleman here is interpreting and standing right behind me, I can see him. You're also saying nothing. I spoke about some tricks here.
We're going to release the speaker at half past twelve. Out of respect, there's another program that he must go and address.
He did mention something about dogs.
No, he said dogs are not there. Continue, what is the problem with interpreting this part of dogs? Okay, Mika Teco, proceed, proceed.
In Lika. I, I was testing the waters, I see it's, it's not working. Greetings to the Chair of the Portfolio Committee and other Portfolio Committee members. And the members of the community. As introduced, I am Mika Teco Sitole. I am representing the Department of Forestry, Fisheries and the Environment. From the branch of. From the branch of, eh, Climate Change and Equality.
What's your opinion on Climate Changes?
Climate Change and Equality.
What's your opinion on Mika Teco?
There, I won't repeat what the previous speakers have said about the realities of climate change.
What's your opinion on Mika Teco?
We have seen many things happening. In one area, there may be a heat wave. Another area, a hailstorm, all happening at the same time.
What's your opinion on Mika Teco?
And I would like to believe that all of us, in one way or the other, directly or indirectly, have been impacted upon by climate change.
What's your opinion on Mika Teco?
Climate change is caused by the greenhouse gases that are emitted in the atmosphere.
What's your opinion on Mika Teco?
So when they get emitted from different activities, such as electricity generation, transportation, waste management and others, they alter how the climatic system functions.
What's your opinion on Mika Teco?
And as such, when the climatic system has been altered, we see many different extreme weather-related events, as mentioned, such as floods, heat waves, hailstorms, firefires, dust storms and many others.
What's your opinion on Mika Teco?
And all of those things affect how we live and where we live.
What's your opinion on Mika Teco?
Given this observations, over a period of time, there hasn't been any legislative governance or guidance from a climate change perspective.
What's your opinion on Mika Teco?
Hence, the department initiated this process. It's the very first, eh, climate change guiding framework in the country.
What's your opinion on Mika Teco?
It is called the Climate Change Bill and it's comprised of six chapters.
What's your opinion on Mika Teco?
And four schedules at the back.
What's your opinion on Mika Teco?
Chapter one of the bill talks to what the purpose of the bill is.
What's your opinion on Mika Teco?
The bill wants to enable the development of an effective national climate change response and a long-term just transition into a low-carbon and climate resilient society.
What's your opinion on Mika Teco?
For the society and the economy in a manner that takes care of the now and the future.
What's your opinion on Mika Teco?
It also has so many objectives into it, including how we want to be part of the international community in responding to climate change, how we want to reduce our greenhouse emissions and how we want to respond in terms of adapting to the impacts of climate change.
What's your opinion on Mika Teco?
It also has, eh, a set of principles that are guided by Section Two Principles in terms of the National Environmental Management Act.
What's your opinion on Mika Teco?
And many definitions that will tell you what is climate change, what is adaptation and what is mitigation and all of these difficult terms that one might come across in the space.
What's your opinion on Mika Teco?
It is a legislation that is going to be applicable in the Republic of South Africa and it is going to be a specific environmental management act. And regarding issues of climate change, this legislation will always prevail.
What's your opinion on Mika Teco?
Chapter two talks to alignment with policies and, eh, other institutional arrangements.
What's your opinion on Mika Teco?
It is calling all organs of state or institutions that have a contribution into, eh, emitting the greenhouse gases and also those that are impacted upon by climate change to take into their consideration all the risks of climate change into their planning systems. It also calls all the other critical sectors of the societies, such as, eh, eh, the business sector, academia, civil society organization, to provide advice to government on how we can move about responding to climate change.
What's your opinion on Mika Teco?
In terms of, eh, institutional arrangements, it is calling for provinces to establish climate change forums to be operated under the intergovernmental forums that have been formed in terms of the IGR Act.
What's your opinion on Mika Teco?
Those forums are going to coordinate climate change work within those specific provinces.
What's your opinion on Mika Teco?
And they are going to coordinate and develop reports of what would have happened as far as climate change is concerned in the province and submit the reports to the Presidential Coordinating Committee Council.
What's your opinion on Mika Teco?
It calls the same for metropolitan and district municipalities that they should establish climate change forums under the Intergovernmental Relations Framework Act.
What's your opinion on Mika Teco?
They will also be coordinating climate change activities within their municipal jurisdictions and then report to the Provincial Climate Change Forum.
What's your opinion on Mika Teco?
It also calls that should there be a need, they establish technical support structures so that they get to understand better these climate change-related issues for both provinces and municipalities that are going to be supporting the forums.
What's your opinion on Mika Teco?
Within the very same chapter two, it calls for the establishment for the Presidential, eh, Climate Commission, where the president will appoint different members of community from the different sectors to provide advice to government as far as to how do we mitigate climate change and respond to the impacts.
What's your opinion on Mika Teco?
Chapter three talks to how provinces and municipalities are going to respond to climate change.
What's your opinion on Mika Teco?
It charges Minister, MSs responsible for environmental management-related, eh, provinces or departments in the province to undertake vulnerability assessments and understand how the different sectors in the province are vulnerable to the impacts of climate change and develop provincial-specific climate change response plans. The response plans should be followed by implementation plans, which will then be integrated within their environmental implementation plans for implementation.
What's your opinion on Mika Teco?
The metropolitan municipalities and district municipalities will do the same, undertake vulnerability assessments, understand how vulnerable the different service-deliverer components of the municipalities are to the impacts of climate change and develop climate change response plans for their municipalities.